Good evening and welcome to the October meeting of the Morganton Planning and Zoning Commission. It's amazing what we have to do to get people to come to our meeting. We're glad to see you here tonight. And as we get further into our agenda, I'm sure there's going to be opportunities for you to let us hear your concerns as it may reflect development in zoning. Starting off, we'd like to cover some old business. First item under that is a review and approval of our March 13 and our September 11, 2014 minutes. One was a regular planning and zoning session. The other was our workshop minutes where we had a joint meeting with the city council back in 11 September. I hope you've had an opportunity to see those. Is there any discussion, comments, corrections?
We will approve.
And a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries and those minutes are approved. The second item is a review of city council actions that we've seen since our last meeting, public meeting.
Okay. There was one item of business taken up by the city council. That was a rezoning request at 500 West Fleming Drive of a .78 acre piece of property from heavy industrial to general business conditional use. This request was made by Moll Incorporated to allow a tire store along West Fleming Drive under certain conditions. All of the conditions that were recommended by the planning commission as far as interior use only, no outdoor display except during hours of operation, and no temporary storage unless additional screening is added. All of those items were approved at a public hearing in April of this year. But we have been in workshops since then, so there's been no new business taken up by the city council.
Okay. Any comments or questions on them from the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to next item which is appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone that's here in our audience tonight that would like to address the commission with something that's on your mind that may deal with development or zoning and it is not on our agenda is under new business tonight. Is there anyone here for that? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take our first item and only item tonight, which is consideration of a new zoning ordinance and a zoning map for the city of Morganton. I would like to say that this is a culmination by our commission, which is a group of volunteers to advise the city council on zoning and development changes that are proposed to carry us out to the next 20 years. Our last zoning policy or ordinance was done in 1996. That's been what, some 18 years ago? In 2009, the council approved a Mission 20 Plan, which kind of set the standard for how we want to move forward with Morganton and what we envision Morganton look like. To get to that vision, it takes a change or it's going to require a change in the way we've done our ordinance for zoning and development. And over the past 12 months under the direction of the Development and Design Department of the city of Morganton and their staff and the assistance of Benchmark, and I would like to acknowledge Aaron Burris who is with Benchmark, and I think is Vaughn with you also?
Richard.
Richard, okay. They're in our audience and they also have been very helpful in guiding this commission and all our efforts over this past 12 months that culminates tonight in at least our draft ordinance. What we'd like to do is open this up for comment and discussion. In August, the 28th, the public had the opportunity to come and address concerns. They've also had access, I think the public information has been available online to answer or address any of your concerns, but if not, that's what the purpose of our meeting here tonight is for. And we would like to, I would like to open this up for discussion, but before I do that, I would like to ask if Lee has any comments that he'd like to make on this effort.
Just a few. I would like to compliment the planning commission for their hard work. This process has been going on approximately a year. They've held monthly workshops with the consultants to draft the new ordinance. The city council directed that the new ordinance be undertaken in their last budget year and appropriated funds for us to hire consultant and work with the planning commission and other groups to try to manage some of the issues that they were seeing in the ordinance that were not addressing the 2009 Mission 2030 Plan, which you may recall took place a few years back where a lot of folks were involved in the community to set the course and direction of Morganton for economic growth and prosperity over the next 20 to 30 years. The recommendations in this zoning ordinance is dealing directly with those objectives and goals that were set out at that time. That document is also on the city's website along with the zoning ordinance, so hopefully some of you in the audience have had a chance to look at some of those documents and some of the goals and policies that were set. So a lot of the things that you'll see in this zoning ordinance directly reflects us trying to accomplish those. And some of those we may have done well. Some of you may think we didn't do them very well. We certainly want to hear from you. We've heard from a lot of you. I've spoke to a lot of folks I recognize in the room tonight, and we certainly want to give you every opportunity to express your opinions, talk about your issues with the ordinance as you see it written today. The process as we are currently scheduled, if the ordinance is prepared to move forward tonight to the next step, then it would go from here as a recommendation to the Morganton City Council, who would also hold a public hearing very similar to tonight. Most of you probably received a first-class mail notice. Those were mailed out on September the 17th to a little over 5,200 property owners within the city's jurisdiction that is proposed in this ordinance. And so if you didn't receive those, I probably have it up in my office because we've received back a lot of folks. We use the tax records. If your property has an address, or maybe it's in an estate that goes to an address that you didn't receive, if it's no longer in service, then that mail comes back to us. So if you didn't receive your notice, if you would let us know, then we'll try to correct, at least get correct our next mailing that would likely go out a few weeks before the next public hearing, and so you'll probably be seeing something very similar back in the mail, in your mailbox in the next few weeks. But depending on what happens tonight, that the schedule could either be that it goes to the city council in November or perhaps in December. We're also working with the Burke County Planning Office because one of the major changes proposed in this ordinance is to reduce a significant amount of our extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is, some people call it the one-mile planning area outside of the city limits. A lot of folks, there's about 13 square miles outside the city that we are transitioning over to the Burke County Planning Office and under their zoning control. There's probably 3,000 or 4,000 properties out in that area. We currently do zoning control and building inspections in that area, subdivision regulations in that area. But the county has agreed to accept those properties into their jurisdiction, and they will be going through a similar process in those areas during this next two to three months to transition our zoning in that area over to the county, Burke County zoning. So if you happen to reside in any of those areas, we'll be happy to talk with you about that process. And the folks at Burke County, Scott Carpenter and Jennifer Forni and all those good folks, they'll certainly be able to help you as well, and you can contact them and talk about the property and what classifications may be assigned out in those areas. Basically, the reason that we are moving through the new zoning ordinance is that we found that the current zoning is kind of an antiquated approach to try and implement the goals that the city council has asked us to do. Even though it's a 1996 ordinance, it's really a 1960s document and is kind of drawn up like very much similar to the 1960s zoning ordinance that the city had. It may have a few different names, but it was basically implemented the same way. So with the new Mission 2030 Plan, we determined that doing things under an old regulatory reform is not going to get us the economic stimulus that we felt like this community, we heard from the folks that this community wanted to go in. It doesn't address today's goals and policies. It's not a very user-friendly document. It's very difficult to read. It's kind of, it doesn't have a lot of pictures and things that I like, my kids like. So you can look at an ordinance and understand what it's telling you as far as signage and things to do that you can do with your property and examples of how you want to develop your property. There's a lot of that user-friendly piece in this ordinance that if you have a section that you go to, you can see examples. And if you don't understand the examples, then you can ask the staff. But it's very, it's a very user-friendly document, and so it brings it up to current standards. The current process of zoning and conditional use zoning and the things that we've been doing over the past 10 or 15, 20 years, it's a very slow process. It takes a long time to go through a rezoning process to be able to do what you want to do a lot of times, even though it may not have a lot of controversy in the neighborhood that you're in. If it's not zoned appropriately, you have to go through a rezoning, a political process to, and pay fees and advertisements, and it's just a lot of work to get to do what you want to do. A lot of the newer developments over the past 10 or 20 years have had to go through that process. What we found was that time is money. It delays folks. It stops projects. It doesn't help the economic growth in certain areas, whether you're trying to do a small business or a large industry. You want to be able to put your plan on the table, get a review, get your permits. And so this process streamlines that very much. It gives you a lot of different options for the properties in town. It simplifies the number of districts that we have from 13 districts down to six districts. But within each of those six districts, it's based on the performances. You do more, you get more. So it's very much based on the areas that you're located in, the access to infrastructure. If you're on a major roadway, you have four or five lanes out in front of you. It makes a lot of sense that you can accommodate more traffic. You can accommodate, you can get to water and sewer utilities a lot easier. Commercial and the more intense use, whether it's a 100-unit apartment complex, or a shopping center, or maybe a small manufacturing facility, those are the kind of locations that we want to promote that kind of development with them. And so there's a process. As long as you do a quality development along the roadway corridors, then this ordinance accommodates for that. If you're in the middle of a neighborhood, if you're in the middle of a very established neighborhood, single-family houses all the way around, whether it's big houses or little houses, it treats you the same, whether you're in a, what folks call the rich neighborhoods or the poor neighborhoods. You still get the same treatment under this ordinance. You don't have to necessarily, just because you're in a low-income area, you don't get the same protection sometimes as the folks in the high-income areas. This ordinance takes that away. If you're a single-family house and you're a small house, but you've got your life savings invested in that house, you deserve as much protection as the folks that have a big house and a big lot. It's still single-family. It's still families and neighborhoods. You don't want a lot of industry in your neighborhood. You don't want that kind of stuff. You don't want businesses in your neighborhood. You don't want, that's the kind of stuff that people call us about. What's going on in my neighborhood? Why is this going on in my neighborhood? Why are you sticking this big apartment complex in my neighborhood? You know, we may not have the biggest neighborhood around, but we deserve as much protection as the folks on the other side of town. This ordinance does that. I feel very good and very confident that we've tried to balance this ordinance to accommodate folks, to give them opportunities in different parts of town based on what their property can really, really accommodate. It also gives you options when you're selling the property of different choices for different developers that may be able to come into your property. Maybe you live on a three-lane road. You can sell the property, and maybe there's a duplex on the property now, but maybe it can accommodate more. Maybe it can accommodate more units. If they do a quality job and protect the adjoining property owners and be able to provide the access and the water and sewer, this ordinance will allow you to do that. If you run a small home occupation type business, say you want to create your own small business, maybe you're an artist or somebody is turning a hobby into something that's more value-producing, this ordinance will allow you to do some things out of your house that you haven't been able to do before. So you can get a small business going before you have to go out into the community and actually acquire a business property perhaps to turn your business and to grow your business. So it's a very economically friendly document. It encourages, the current ordinance doesn't really create, doesn't allow you to be creative on your property. This ordinance does. The current ordinance doesn't accomplish the city's appearance goals that it set for itself in Mission 2030 along its major corridors. We're getting a lot of visitors in this area now from out of state, out of town that's coming to the various facilities that we've offered and that we've been able to develop in the community, from the Greenway Project to the Ballparks to a lot of the tourist attractions that we're now starting to see, some of the wineries and the breweries and the other things that folks are coming to Morganton to spend money in, and then they leave. This ordinance encourages attractive development along our major corridors from the interstate that folks are coming into the community to stay and spend money here and have an enjoyable visit and then leave. It gives them, it's kind of your front door, your front porch. So the ordinance does that. The current ordinance doesn't make adaptive reuse very easy. Drexel 7 would be a good example, the old Drexel plants and things down along the bypass. They were zoned industrial. The properties were always used for industrial purposes, and this ordinance, now under a high-intensity zoning classification along the Fleming Drive area, opens up all kind of possibilities for those properties. You can do residential in that district. You can do commercial in that district. You can do wholesaling in that district. You can do manufacturing in that district. It gives all kinds of opportunities within those kind of areas for people to come in and make reinvestment and do things without having to go through a expensive rezoning process in places like that. Some of our existing shopping centers may be in the same boat. You have the Fiddler's Run Shopping Center, the old Walmart Shopping Center that are zoned general business right now, which would allow only retailing-type uses, but there may be an industrial facility that might want to locate there. We'd have to go through a rezoning process to do that under the current ordinance. This ordinance eliminates that need. So it helps investors make a better financial decision in a shorter period of time. Other than that, I think that is the major changes, and we'll certainly like to hear from you. What do you think about these ordinance and some of the specifics?
Thank you, Lee. Before I open this for public comment, I would like to acknowledge for the public record, receipt of some correspondence from interested parties. We have a letter from Scott Davis, Choice Properties Company, LLC, 300 Castle Gate Drive, Morganton, North Carolina. We have a letter received from Roger D. Coffey, 5016 Valley View Circle, and his Lenora address, zip is 28645. And I have a packet that I received today from T.L. Norman Land Company, address is 511 East Union Street here in Morganton. Before I open it up for public comment, first, in the interest of knowing how long our meeting's going to take, could I see a show of hands of people that would like to make comment tonight? Okay, great. We will ask, and when the spirits so move, that if you'll come to either one of our podiums, or just we only have one tonight, okay. If you'll come to the podium and you'll please give us your name, where you reside, and then address your concerns or thoughts as it may apply to this new draft zoning ordinance. With that, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Bradshaw. I reside at 411 Old NC-18 Morganton. I am the owner-operator of W&amp;B Motors, a car lot here in Morganton. I am here to speak in opposition to the new zoning request for the city limits of Morganton to take down streamers at businesses. My grandfather Ralph Bradshaw started our car business in 1949, and my father Jerry Bradshaw, who is here in the audience today, was the second owner of the business until he retired in 2003. I am in opposition to remove streamers at my car lot because I am located at 506 South Green Street, as you come into downtown Morganton from the south side of town, up from the railroad depot and that sharp curve, where it is a 20 mile per airspeed zone, and most people seem to run 60 miles per hour. So when a potential customer sees my five lines of streamers blowing in the wind, they may come and purchase a car at my business. We also keep up clean, fresh streamers and try to keep the car lot clean and presentable at all times. Our family car business has been serving the citizens of Morganton and surrounding counties for over 65 years with affordable transportation, and we have had streamers at all three of those locations for that period of time. So I frankly do not see why it is a problem for the city now. I think if we have to take the streamers down, I should have to take my American flag down as well because freedom is lost. I hope that you board members will consider this request. So in closing, I would like to state what my late-great-grandpa Ralph Bradshaw said, that we can be a pro-business city and still have a nice-looking city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
My name's Kathy Morrison, 200 Conley Street, Morganton, 20202, and I represent Wilson Drive and Conley Street. I'm just a humble homeowner of one of those little neighborhoods that would just like to see it stay a little neighborhood. I'm not really against, I'm not against progress in any form, shape, or form, but we would like to have a neighborhood, we have a neighborhood where the children can still ride bicycles, play basketball. We can still walk. We have a lot of elderly with walkers, wheelchairs that get out. We'd like to see it stay that way. If we adapt this new zoning, I understand now, Mr. Anderson was talking about advertising, you know, you have to put the little billboard out and change the zoning ordinance and such. How would we be notified of a zoning ordinance change or a proposed zoning ordinance change with, under the new?
It would be under the same way we do it today. You would receive a notice in the mail if you're a joining property owner within a certain distance of the property. You would see a sign go up on the property, and there would be an advertisement in the local newspaper.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Question, is there anything in the ordinance that generated your comment other than what I'm getting out of this?
The little map that my neighbor David printed out for me here, right now, part of Hopewell Road, Wilson Drive, actually coming up Barber Drive and around what is now closed off where Walmart is, is zoned, under the new one, it would be zoned NC-0 Neighborhood Conservative Overlay. We'd like to see if we maybe could extend that on over to Conley Street and up a little bit. That was that. And like I say, when you come off Conley Street and come down past Cookout and right there, it is very residential, very children-oriented, very narrow. Matter of fact, I'm in that little 90-degree curve there that people seem to take on two wheels, and it's getting a little dicey to sometimes back out of your driveway.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you understand the NCO overlay, which is what its function is.
Okay.
Would you like for me to explain a little bit about it?
Okay.
Okay, on the screen, I guess folks out in the audience can see it. You have this yellow area, which is a medium-intensity district and around the Hopewell Road area. The Starmount Circle area is also medium-intensity residential, and then it turns green once you get over into the Barber Street area. The hatched areas on the map indicate in this color blue that it's a neighborhood conservation area. Neighborhood conservation is kind of a special overlay. If you look at the map, it's kind of like you've got a base zoning classification that's medium intensity. That's what you can do based on the table of permitted uses. Then there is an overlay. Some areas have greater restrictions. Some of you may own a piece of property that's maybe zoned commercial, let's say, but you're also in a flood plain. Maybe there's special requirements. Those are other special requirements that apply to the property. The overlay areas for neighborhood conservation are set over traditional, single-family neighborhoods that that's all they want, is just single-family houses in their neighborhood. There's usually not a lot of vacant land left in the areas that we designated. Most of it's fully developed. There's existing homes there. There's not a lot of apartment, there's no apartments, there's no condominiums, there's no duplexes, there's no businesses. So a lot of the areas that you'll see on the zoning map that have neighborhood conservation, it was because of the existing land use. If you could put an existing overlay over this, then there's a large vacant tract of land right here, let's say, on this corner, then it could only be developed as a single-family subdivision. Under the zoning classification, the way it's currently zoned as MID, you could potentially do maybe some apartments there, maybe some townhomes, some condominiums. You could maybe do like a beauty shop. You probably couldn't do much more than a professional service-type business like that, but it would more than likely be residential, but it could certainly be more than just a single-family. In the Starmount neighborhood, any of those options are removed. Even though it's zoned medium-intensity, because of the overlay that's over top of it, it's single-family use only. There may be a home occupation of a very low-intensive type, a professional office. Say you've got a computer and you're doing phone business or something out of your house. You can still do that, but you couldn't operate a lawnmower repair out of your house. So it protects to that degree. Maybe a home occupation and issues could possibly be more intensive. So that's, that kind of gives you, starts giving you some idea where the boundary things cut. And we can make zoning map changes right up until the time that the city council takes. We're trying to look at them each individually as people come in, and we can make some adjustments in the map. It could certainly be adjusted some, so.
Did that help you?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Who's next?
Hi, good evening. I'm Alan McCroy. I'm a homeowner here in Morganton, but I'm appearing for you tonight as an attorney for Mr. Roger Coffey, who, Mr. Chairman, you just mentioned, had sent in his own personal letter. Mr. Coffey is here with his family, and he is a farm owner here in Morganton. He owns a tree and shrubbery farm, which is off of Knollwood Drive, kind of in the Fleming Drive area. I can give you the pin, and it's 4461 Lot 12U, Mr. Anderson, if you're looking for that to find.
See, I think I've got it up on the screen for you.
And he's got a unique request, which I will send I can give you the pin, and it's 4461 Lot 12U, Mr. Anderson, if you're looking for that to find.
See, I think I've got it up on the
Okay, thank you.
Screen for you.
And he's got a unique request, which I will send, a more formal request for you to consider. I've just been retained yesterday to look into this for him, but let me, yeah, I told him I'd come here and make a public comment on his behalf. Mr. Coffey and his family have owned a tree and shrubbery farm on a 20, almost 28-acre tract in this area since 2003. They, they invest more than $250,000 into our community every year running this business, very successful nursery business. Under the current proposed zoning ordinance, we don't object to the change in the zoning classification, because it permits bona fide farms, and I want to commend you for allowing bona fide farms in all of your zoning classifications to remain in the city of Morganton. That's something you don't have to do under the law, so that's good that you do that. However, you have placed his property, at least a portion of it, in a neighborhood conservation overlay. And when I look at your permitted use table, it indicates that bona fide farms is not a permitted use in this area. This obviously call, this obviously causes quite concern for Mr. Coffey, his son, who also runs the business, is here with him today, and so they have asked me to make a special request, which I will make more formally, that this 28-acre tract be excluded from that neighborhood conservation overlay. As I read your purposes for the neighborhood conservation overlay, "to protect and conserve established neighborhoods within low-intensity and medium-intensity districts from more intensive or incompatible uses." This has not been an incompatible use, and it obviously never will be any higher intensity as a bona fide farm in this area. Also, that the South Forest subdivision which backs up to this area, we could, I think we could get almost all the homeowners here to tell you they would like for that land to, to remain the way it is. And if the intent is to make sure that it can be used for single-family use, it could be still. But nonetheless, all of these 28 acres, except about a quarter acre, is in a floodplain. So that's why it's farmland, and that's why it's used to grow trees and shrubs. So I, we're going to make a formal request that, that Mr. Coffey's 27.95-acre tract, located off Knollwood Drive, be excluded from the neighborhood conservation overlay. Mr. Coffey has done a pretty extensive research to see other bona fide farms and how they've been impacted by this, and to his knowledge, this is the only bona fide farm in the city limits of Morganton that is affected by an overlay. We would ask you to consider whether not taking his land out of the neighborhood conservation overlay would potentially be arbitrary under our, under state law, or could, could potentially violate his equal protection rights. I think, however, that you will see that we would like to keep this nursery in our town. It's a great business, it provides a great benefit to our city, and I think that excluding it from the neighborhood conservation overlay, allowing it to remain a bona fide farm use for the purposes that it's currently used, is a good thing and should be done. I think he's had some conversations with some officials who've indicated to him certain things, such as certainly you would be allowed to continue to use a farm, however, if it, if it quit being used for a farm for a six-month period, I don't know all the details of those conversations, that it may, we may not let you have a farm again. That kind of talk is very concerning to a business owner. All kinds of things can happen, they have to allow certain fields to lay fallow for certain periods of time, that kind of thing. There could be change in, in dealing with ownership between his family, because certainly his sons run the business, that type of thing. So we're just asking you, and I'll make a formal request for you to consider, that this, this specific 28-acre piece of property be excluded from the neighborhood conservation overlay in that area. And thank you very much.
Quick question for you, sir, do you have a field, you said only a quarter of the 28 acres is not in a floodplain?
That's what, that, Mr. Coffey can address that, he's the one who told me about that, is that correct, sir?
The best I can look on that flood map, it was actually maybe a quarter of an acre.
That, that's, it's substantial.
Is that about right?
Yeah, there's a lot of floodplain in that area, so, yeah, I mean, that's, it's a lot.
And that's why it hasn't been further developed as a subdivision.
So potential development of the property is pretty, pretty nil.
It is. I obviously don't want businesses going in there, but a tree farm is pretty much as high as some best use.
Okay.
And he just don't want that limited.
Address anything on that?
Well, you have
Why it was placed as a neighborhood conservation area? One of the, kind of the recommendation, or at least the basis of this recommendation, this was a hard one, because it is a floodplain, good floodplain use. This particular property in here is not usable for much else, you certainly don't want a lot of houses down there, people can get flooded out. The neighborhood has complained for many, many years about the heavy trucks, tractor and trailer trucks, and things that are bringing in a lot of the things into their neighborhoods that's utilized by the nursery operation, and there's really not any other forms of access except going through the single-family neighborhood. So it's, it's one of those things that, as, as time goes on, folks have asked that we try to prevent bad things from happening in their neighborhood. It's not to say that the farming use is not good on the property, that they don't like it back there, it's, I think it's the auxiliary uses that happen, coming through the neighborhood, so if there could be another access point, perhaps work through into the property, I think the overlay would be a very easy removal, because the trees obviously don't create a problem for the neighbors. It's the trucks and the equipment and the mud on the roads and the things that are getting drug out into their neighborhood. Their, their children are riding bicycles, obviously, and playing, and they're worried about some of those things. So that was kind of the expressions that they were giving to us. Generally, we try to take the more conservative approach when we're trying to make the recommendations, but if things can get worked out, I think there's, there's certainly options there that could, that we would recommend as from a staff standpoint.
It's where, it's where land use has an impact from the use into the, joining neighbors, and the impact that that creates into that particular neighborhood. That's pretty much
Well, thank you very much for pointing that out, and I will talk with the Coffeys about that, and I look forward to working with you and trying to figure out a solution to that problem. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Who's next?
Come, they come this way, now this way. City owns this piece.
I'm Jeff, Jeff Towery, I reside at 1864 NC-126 Morganton. I'm here to talk to you about the non-conforming mobile home, manufactured home parks. My dad and I own a mobile home park here in Morganton. We have nine units on South Chestnut Street. We've owned them for 17 years, and in those 17 years, we've updated six of those nine units. All of our units have been inspected by the City of Morganton Building Inspector. Most of the units have been inspected more than, more than once or multiple times. All of our units are occupied by families, except we have one unit that's occupied by a single lady. We have very, very few problems in the mobile home park. Morganton Department of Public Safety will tell you that we have very few problems. We ask them, we, we work hard to manage our park, and I know that there's problems here in the city that you're trying to address. We ask you not to paint everybody in the same brush, because you should have ordinances and things in place to take care of the problems that you have. We have people living there that have single lady, we have a single lady that's got children, and her gross income's about $350 a week. And I'm gonna ask you where she can get a place that she can live with central heat, central air condition, somebody take care of the yard, and she lives in a safe place for about $350 a week. We have a single black lady that, I'm gonna say she's mentally challenged, she draws $739 a month. She lives there, she has a porch she can sit out on in the morning and have her coffee, she has central heat, central air condition, washer and dryer hookup, we take care of all lawn work for her. Recently, she got scammed, and for a couple months, she had no money. So she got to live there for free for a couple months, because she had nowhere to go. And we tried to get her into public housing, and guess what, they put her on a waiting list for about a year, and then when she finally got a call that she was gonna be able to maybe get public housing, she can't afford public housing. So I'm not sure where, where you think that she's gonna go. We stay fully occupied, we have some vacancies, some turnover, but most of the time we're full. We have people that come by and want to know if we're gonna have something. I recently had a young lady come by when I was working, ask if we had something to rent, because her mother and father lived in public housing here in Morganton, and they had to move because they couldn't afford public housing anymore. So evidently, we're providing a need for people to have a place to live, or we wouldn't stay full all the time. Now, we keep hearing about these affordable houses that's coming in, and 60 units, and in the paper says 72 units, I don't know how many it's gonna be, but my understanding is the property has not even closed yet to, for this, for this project to take place, and, and it's very cloudy as to whether it's gonna close at all. So, you know, if, if, I've been asking, how many affordable housing units have been built in the city in the last five years, and the only one anybody can tell me about is one out on 64, maybe, that, and I'm not sure that that's the place that clientele that live with us could, could move to, I, I don't know, but, you know, if the city started today, I'm not sure in five years, they could have enough affordable housing to take care of all the mobile homes that, that's gonna have to be taken out of the city. If, if people had a choice of where they could live, they probably wouldn't live in our park. They would much rather live in a nice, single-family house or somewhere else, but the two things that they tell us is that they feel safe, number one, and secondly, that they can afford it. So if, if you build enough affordable housing, then people will not have to live in a mobile home park, and the market conditions will take care of themselves, because, but right now, you don't have anywhere for people to go. So I, I just want you to think about before you do this, you know, who this is gonna benefit and who it's gonna hurt. And, you know, it, it's not gonna kill me financially if you take away my mobile home park, but what's gonna kill me is telling the people that's been with me for years and years that, you know, you're gonna have to move out, because the city's claims that your part of, your home's no longer, can be, stay in the city, so we gotta haul up the landfill and have it crushed. That, you know, that, that's the part that tears me up. And when you talk about money part, you know, maybe the, the city would like to look at that. We wrote checks last year, just on that one property, to the city of Morganton, over $3,500. And I don't know exactly how much utilities and electricity and, uh, garbage pickup the people paid, but I'm guessing that it was somewhere over $25,000 that the people in those, in my park paid last year to the city of Morganton for their utilities. So, you know, I'm just asking you to use some common sense, and think about, you know, where people are gonna go, where people are gonna live. Maybe if we can put this off for a longer period of time, or grandfather people in, as you have to change out mobile homes, which we've done, then you need to conform to the new city ordinances. But to tell people that they're gonna have to leave their home and move out within, within five years, five years is not long. You know, I, I think, hopefully this board will look at that, and common sense will prevail. Thank you very much.
Uh, good, a quick question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said you had nine units?
Yes, sir.
What is the acreage that is, that encompasses?
Approximately one acre.
One acre.
We would lose about 85% of our homes, according to this ordinance, we'd have to, we might be able to keep one, one home on each parcel property, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Not a public speaker, so I'm really nervous.
All right, just be calm, now, if you give us your name and your address, please.
Uh, I'm Stephanie Norman, and I reside at 511 East Union Street, and my husband and I own a 52-unit trailer park on Ross Street, and we are opposed against the new zoning requirements for mobile home parks within the city limit. I wanted to just start off with talking about all the parks in the city. There's about 250 to 300 manufactured homes that are within mobile home parks within the city limits that are non-conforming, which also includes Amherst Road. We are the second-largest park in the city of Morganton, so with 52 units and approximately 150 people that would be affected by, if this is, this ordinance, if it's approved. Our park is approximately 50% Hispanic, 45% white, and about 5% black or African-American. 60% of our tenants are on fixed incomes, 50% of our tenants own their own mobile homes in that park, and we just rent the land for lot rent for them. We did send a packet out to your homes, as well as here, if we couldn't find your home, because we are deeply disturbed about how many people that this is gonna affect, and potentially have people homeless within our city. We understand the overall goal for the future of Morganton, and we love Morganton, too. We live here, and we live right in the middle of downtown, in fact, two blocks from here. But this is not the way to go, to remove the trailer parks from the city limits. Non-conforming manufactured home parks with higher density and older manufacturer homes may not be the most desirable in your eyes, but this type of housing is the only type of housing that a lot of our citizens can afford. Apartments and duplexes have been mentioned as viable alternative affording housing options. I disagree, I strongly disagree, because rent is often higher in apartments and duplexes. Morganton Housing Authority, Section 8 housing, and the elderly handicap units have higher rents than what we do and what people can afford. I also gave you information from Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and also of all the Section 8 housing within the city limits, as well as information from Morganton Housing about the substantial waitlist that every one of those have. So it's not really an option, when you look at the waitlist that they have. Some of our tenants don't have children, so they're not a priority for that type of So I would ask that you take a lot of consideration to the fair market value, which we are under, and that was provided by Western Council of Governments in your packet. As Mr. Towery said, some people don't wanna live in apartments or duplexes, they don't like people, being right on top of people, when they can hear what's going on through the walls. A lot of the apartments, including some of the apartments below our trailer park, have a lot of drug activity, and they don't wanna be in that situation. We actually purchased Ross Street in 2008, it was a mess. We spent a considerable amount of time cleaning that up, cleaning our tenants up, making capital improvements, and reducing by 70% the police calls that came out to that park. And I think if you check with Morganton Public Safety, you'll see that that has reduced substantially. We do not tolerate drug activity, we do not tolerate criminal activity whatsoever. Citizen, what some of our tenants have said is, one of the reasons they don't wanna go into apartments or duplexes is because they do have children, and they want a yard to play in, not a common yard. They want a yard of their own that they can play in, and they have their own swing set and their own sandbox and, and whatnot. At one of the informational sessions, and I actually believe that on September 11th, that it was mentioned that trailer parks were trashy. I would tell you that trashiness is part of poor ownership, not the trailer. There's a big difference between not being a responsible owner and having a trashy home in your pocket. I provided several pictures around the house, around the city of Morganton, of houses that have not been kept up, of commercial buildings that have not been kept up, and on our significant eyesore, when you come down the city of, what is that, Meeting Street, and over on East Concord Street, that are boarded up, that have never been taken care of. So I wanna stress that trashiness is an ownership issue and an enforcement issue, not a issue with manufactured homes. Going back to our tenants that own their own homes, two of our parks are predominantly owner-owned, and they only pay lot rent. To move their trailer would be about $6,000, and they don't have that. And I'm certainly not gonna tell my tenants that they have to take what they own, and they've worked hard for, and move their trailer because of, of this being passed. They can't afford alternative housing, I think Towery's already mentioned that, they can't get a loan from the bank, and manufactured homes is a way for lower-income families to own their own property. Most importantly, I think our tenants like to be in the city limits, because a lot of them do have transportation issues, and it allows them to be near shopping, their doctor's offices, grocery stores, and their churches. offices, grocery stores, and their churches. I wanna break down a little bit, too, that by eliminating, eliminating the parks within the city limits, you're gonna impact our most vulnerable citizens, uh, which is our elderly on low income or fixed incomes, our minorities, our immigrants, and our disabled and mentally ill. Um, I wanna tell you a story, um, about some of our older tenants, um, that own their own home and have a fixed income. Some of them have a, a fixed income of seven hundred, eight hundred dollars a month, that's not a lot. Where are they gonna go? We have one tenant that has, that bought her trailer brand-new, purchased it outright, and has lived there since nineteen seventy-two. And if you walk into her trailer, her trailer is immaculate, and it looks brand-new. I don't, and I will not tell her to move. Our minority and immigrant tenants is, will leave the county. Some of you may think that's a good thing, that's not a good thing. Uh, they work in agriculture, and they work over at Case Farms. I think it's assumed that our Hispanic population are illegal. Um, many of our Hispanic populations are American citizens, their children are American citizens, um, or they're here on a five-year visa, and that is legal. They may work out of the county, but they spend their money here, and they keep their trailers up. And a lot of them own their own trailers. So I would ask, has anybody asked Case Farms what Case Farms is gonna do if their workers leave? Has anybody talked to the agricultural farmers that if they leave? Um, and particularly with our Hispanic population, it is a stepping block for them. Uh, it's affordable housing that allows them to save money, and we've actually had five tenants purchase houses within the city of Morganton. So it's just a stepping block for them. We do have mentally disabled tenants that would have nowhere else to go, um, and no one else will rent to them because they are mentally disabled. I don't know where they would go, because if you've checked North Carolina legislation, they can't go into assisted living facilities any longer, and they can't go into adult care homes any longer. So they would end up on the street and homeless. And last time I checked, we already have eighty-six people that are homeless, that are wandering, uh, downtown Morganton on a daily basis and have nowhere else to go. And I wanna share a story about Lisa, and I just make up Lisa as her name because I can't, obviously, I don't wanna not breach anybody's confidentiality, but I don't wanna embarrass anybody either, but, um, about once a quarter, she likes to break out windows, and, um, she'll break the window out and we replace it. And she apologizes, and we say, "No problem." She pays for the window, we put the window right back in, and we go on our happy way. An apartment's not gonna put up with that, a duplex is not gonna put up with that, and anybody renting a home's not gonna put up with that. I don't wanna say we put up with it, but our tenants are our families, um, and we treat our tenants like they're our families, and I always say, "Through the grace of God, there go I," because I may be in that situation one day, and some of my family members may be in that situation one day, and I would hope that I would have a place to live, that somebody would overlook that and allow me to stay. I've also been told this is an equality issue by Mr. Anderson. And when I asked him to explain to me what an equality issue was, he told me, "Well," excuse me, I gotta drink, I gotta drink some water. He said, "Well, this person over here has an acre lot, and they wanna put ten trailers on it, and, uh, I told them that they can't because the current code said you can only have four an acre," I think that's right. Is that right, four an acre? And, uh, they said, "Well, Mr. Norman over here has ten on his acre, so why can't I have ten on my acre?" Well, so he says, "By eliminating the trailer parks, that everybody's equal." If I misquote you, you tell me. And so I asked him, so I asked him, I said, "Well..."
Would you like for me to speak?
Well, well...
Since you're not, since you're speaking for me?
Just, just if I misquote you, okay? So I asked him, I said, "Well, so if I go down here to build a house, and it's cheaper for me to build a house on nineteen seventy terms and not two thousand fourteen terms, uh, are you, does that mean that you're gonna let me do that because everybody else is not up to two thousand fourteen codes, or are you gonna make the exception for me?" And he said, "That was apples and oranges." And I said, "That's not apples and oranges. Does that mean that you're gonna go knock on every house and make sure that every house is today's code?" Because by eliminating these parks, that's what you're saying, is that everybody has to be at the same standard on the same code, even though we've been grandfathered in. Furthermore, um, we proposed, and we have agreed, that there needs to be standards. You know, if there's no standards, then things can get out of control, right? And, and we know that there's certain parks that have, their owner has not been responsible, and they have been let go, and we understand that. So we agree that there needs to be standards, and we have proposed that there is a standard. In fact, we have agreed to everything that you have proposed, with the exception of one thing, and that is that you eliminate the park. Now, to talk to Mr. Anderson, he'd say, "We're not eliminating the park, you just have to be in conformance, right?" But you can't get into this conformance. The nineteen ninety-four, or newer trailers are about impossible to find, so even if we had the money, that we could do that, you can't find them. Because about that time is when double wides really got popular. Um, and so, and it's not cost-efficient for us to go put new trailers that are two thousand fourteen in there. That would just be our, our own trailers, but what about the trailers that people own themselves? How are they gonna go get a new trailer? And we already just talked about how there's waitlists, and there's really not affordable housing. So, um, I hope that it makes sense that the amortization needs to be removed, and we comply with these other options to come up with some, or proposals to come up to standards, but remove the fact that they all have to be replaced and be nineteen ninety-four newer, because that's just not possible. And as a result of that not being able to be attained, in essence, you're removing the parks. I'd like to say one other thing, and then I think my husband's gonna come up here and talk.
Well, is he, well, let me ask you this, will he have much to say different what you're telling us?
Oh, yes.
Okay. While, while I've got you on the hook here, I'd like to ask, the fifty-two units that you now have, as far as this park, what is the acreage that that encompasses?
Um, uh, we have, it's on two sides of the street, and on one side, it's five-and-a-half acres, and on the other one, it's eight-and-a-half acres.
Okay.
And I asked him that before I came up here, 'cause I heard you ask him, so I thought I better ask, 'cause he's the numbers guy, I'm the hu- humanity side of the business.
I don't think that's correct.
Yep, it'd be fourteen acres, though.
So, I, I guess what I would leave before my husband comes up here...
I'm, I'm curious, the, the acreage figures you're talking about...
You'd have to ask him that.
Each parcel that you're talking about, fourteen acres, seven, I don't think that's correct. I think that's...
I tell you, we own half the street down there on Ross Street, so...
You own other parcels down the street, but it's not part of the park parcel, right?
Well, he can, he can speak more to that, 'cause I'm not the number...
I just wanna make sure we got our acreage, the tax maps are right.
Yes.
Because, I, I mean, that's what the tax maps are showing here, is...
He, he can speak to that.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that we got the same...
Yes. But, and yes, he's gonna tell you a lot more different things than what I've said, because we said we'd split it up, because I handle this part of the business, and he handles that part, so we have very much different...
Is it time for, yeah, you have one more point you said you wanted to make?
Well, I think I would like to address it, um, but I think I'll let my husband address it, 'cause he could probably do a better job with it. But, again, uh, we don't need to be in the business of putting people out of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norman, did you want to come forward, then?
Timothy L. Norman, 511 East Union Street, Morganton, North Carolina. I apologize for my wife being a little long-winded. But she certainly can get a point across. Anyway, um, we have owned the mobile home park since two thousand eight, and, uh, through the, um, through the banking and financial crisis, it took about five years to get financing for it, and, um, in two thousand fourteen, we got permanent financing for it, and in actuality, it is, um, three acres on one side of the street, and about five-and-a-half with a combination of two, of two parcels on the other side of the street. So it is out of conformance in that. Like my wife says, the, um, we're in agreeance, agreeance with, you know, upping the standards of at least four per acre, with the twenty-five-foot buffers for, um, sa- uh, public safety and fire and all that. It's just the nineteen ninety-four issue, I think it is Schedule, um, Schedule H on six-point-four-point-four is, it's unattainable, and, um, it's unattainable for our, for our, for us or any of our tenants. I suppose, uh, y'all putting a face with, uh, you're putting my face with all these packages that I've bombarded you with, and I didn't mean to work the postal office to death, but I guess I did. But in the last several two or three weeks, I've did an unofficial, unofficial statistical study about the amount of people and, and housing in the city limits of Morganton that are in these non-conforming mobile homes. Are y'all aware it's close to six, uh, excuse me, seven to eight percent of the entire population of this town? Bet you didn't know that. And, uh, that's rather significant. This will, this, this proposal, specifically H and six-point-four, six-point-four-point-four, will negatively impact, um, the, um, the livability in this fair town. I've lived here all my life, except for college, and I live right in the middle of it, and we like it. Anyway, um, I did a little bit of research on this amortization, and, um, I, I feel that it's an entirely too aggressive approach, uh, for this particular issue. Amortization works well with, and there's some Supreme Court studies with such concerning billboards and junkyards. There's just one common factor that's taken out of that, it's the people and the substantial amount of them. And, um, I suppose all y'all have read the articles in the newspaper last Friday, 'cause you, you certainly know how I feel about it, uh, but I'm just gonna get straight to the point. I feel that a lot of this is, um, especially with the folks and the demographics involved, with the different social demographics, that this will directly affect that we're getting close to a violation of the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen ninety-five. There are seven protected classes. The owners of these mobile homes, ninety percent of the owners of these mobile homes or where they live are in a protected class of, and those protected classes are race, race or color, uh, sex, religion, national origin, familial status, or disability. In our particular, uh, park, we have two of those seven. One would think that we're, if you template that mentality of removing a mobile home, an older mobile home that people own, out of the jurisdiction of the city of Morganton, one would have to ascertain that we are steering people out. That's a very, very good assumption. And I'm certainly not a lawyer, but it's, it's, you can, you can see what's happening. One thing about the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight, and, uh, it, and it's a Fair Housing Act, and one of the sections is, um, discrimination in housing based on disability. I'm just gonna read a little excerpt, and then I'll stop. "The Division's enforcement of the Fair Housing Act's protection for persons with disabilities or any other protected classes has concentrated in two major areas. One is ensuring that zoning and other regulations concerning land use are not employed to hinder residential choices of these individuals." This is their choice where to live. I'm asking you to, to take the amortization part out of the current zoning twenty-thirty and study it further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question for you, uh, I think your wife stated that finding a nineteen ninety-four manufactured home is a challenge, is that correct?
Extremely difficult.
What I, what options would you envision ten years down the road, then? Assuming that they're, they're, the useful or life expectancy of one of these manufactured homes pre-nineteen ninety-four, having a clue what that would be, but, but I'm looking...
Well, if one takes care of, uh, one takes care of the product, it's like taking care of a car.
Sure.
Or your body. Twenty, thirty, forty-plus years. These are Class A, and manufactured homes, um, after nineteen seventy-six are called Class A or Class B. And most, most are, well, that's just what they are. If you take care of them, you know, maintain them, do your proper repairs and maintenance without adulterating the, um, the HUD seal, which would be basically, if the walls came down, I mean, it's ready for the dump. Or the ceiling falls, it's ready for the dump. Well, anyway, we propose that, that whenever one needs to be replaced, I think we should go nineteen ninety-four or newer. But on our timeline, not for it to be forced on us, I mean, financially impossible, and it's physically impossible to find these products.
I reckon, my point being is, you would not say that a manufactured home would, would have a life expectancy that of like a stick-built home, would you?
Absolutely not. Over, over time, in general, probably not, but they've, but they could, if you maintain them properly. We cool seal too today. And that cool seal is basically coating the roof.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any other questions from Mr. Norman?
Well, I do, what would be your timeline? Like you, what ours was, was five?
Your five years.
What would you, what, what is your...
In what respect?
If we were gonna continue to do that and have to replace, what would be, you said you would, at your own timeline, what would be your own timeline of these places having to be replaced, or these, these buildings being replaced?
Well, that would be the, the, the owners and the, the owners and the, um, basically code enforcement, that's, that would be their decision. You know, if, but it's, it's typically we, you replace as needed, you know? And five years down the road, I mean, why throw away a perfectly good house?
But you're not proposing ten, or fifteen, or twenty, you're saying just when their full house would be...
As needed, yes.
By sixty percent rule.
I mean, as needed. The, the life expectancy, the life expect, expectancy or usefulness of these manufactured homes are directly dependent on how you take care of them, solely. I mean, they don't have a finite, uh, timeline where they just collapse. Well, I've, I've bought a two thousand and one model that it's in worse shape than something that we have in nineteen seventy-six, and it's just a matter of how you take care of I used to work with Don Smith at the Holiday Inn, and Don used to work at Lowe's recently. I would see Don all the time because we were always in there buying products. It was repairing, maintaining. We care about, we care about our tenants, we care about our million-dollar business. That's what... That's what it is. I want to keep it that way. We want to provide affordable housing for these delicate, sensitive tenants. And they're just... they need us. So, back to your question, 10, 15 years, I suppose. But I don't want a governmental agency to tell me I just need to change them just because that's a law. Doesn't make good sense.
Can I recap here? You have 52 units, is that correct?
Correct.
27 of those you own yourself and rent.
Correct.
25 of them the tenants own, and they rent space from you, is that correct?
Correct.
You don't have a single mobile home out of the 52 that was manufactured since 1996?
Correct.
So they're all older than that? Okay.
Absolutely.
My notes are correct, then. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Alan Brown, 301 Liberty Trail, Morganton. I've owned mobile home parks since 1979, none of which I've built. Of course, when I went into it, I didn't know squat about mobile homes and just... I didn't prepare a lot because I wanted to hear what everybody says. Y'all are asking a lot of things, and just like my son's asked me, what's the significance of 1994? I don't know. I talked to Lee for a while the other day, and that part didn't come up. But just as Tim, I own... we looked at one park that I have. It's 12 homes, an acre and a half, wasn't it? Acre and a half?
Yeah, I've got it pulled up. Yeah, it's about a walk of road.
12 units. There's three rows, and of course, then right along the front, according to new setbacks, those three would have to go. And all of them are, you know, older homes, so I guess they'd all have to go. As they've said, too, I mean, I guess two-thirds of them are owned by tenants or... in this particular case, I did rent own, and I had sold it, and then took it back, and I rented own. I mean, I've had people in there when I took it back over, they're still there, and that's where they like to be. A lot of them, and over the years that I've had, I've got apartments and all different kind of housing, and there are a lot of people that like to live in mobile homes. And maybe that element isn't desirable, and it seems like this ordinance is sort of picking on that desirability. Whether it's good or bad, that remains to be seen. But it does, as pointed out, you know, pick on these people that, I mean, they don't have a pot to do anything, let alone move their home to another locale or buy a new one, or if they can go to affordable housing, as pointed out, is questionable. So I'm very much opposed to this. I asked Lee, I said, just like Tim was talking about, but I've had mobile homes from all years. I still have some from all years. And there's nothing wrong... you know, if they're kept up, I don't know why this is in question about... I said, well, how long's it gonna last? I mean, they didn't build them to fall apart. You know, some of them, as he says, I mean, just like any houses that you have in the city that aren't kept up, they're gonna fall apart. You know? People may question some of the things I do, and you know, growing up and doing this business that I... like I did, and from when I was young, I learned a lot of things, and some things maybe I'm doing a lot better now, and I've learned. But I've learned that... and I've fixed them, I've moved them, I've done everything, and they're built to last if you keep them up. Also, I mean, there could be in a way there, you know, I said, Lee, well, you know, maybe we could vinyl side, you know, like the new ones are vinyl side and single roof. A lot of people do that. I've got some in one of my parks where there's been additions to them, and then in that park, would that have to go? I mean, it's... it doesn't look... it doesn't look very desirable, of course, to me. I mean, I'm not... I am opposed to the quarter-acre thing as a park owner. I mean, you made... you made a... you know, you made this ordinance, or you kept it... we've kept things going that way, and now it's being taken away. What's proposed is be taken away for me. It's a business. You know, most of the people around my units, they've bought and sold, so, I mean, if there's that little old lady that Lee was telling me, somebody, well, they can't sell their property because there's a mobile home there, you know, that may be an isolated incident. These calls, I mean, do we have a... does that class have some more police calls? Yeah, okay. But I've moved into apartments, and I've had people that have moved out of that in apartments, and if they were bad, you know, they're still gonna get calls. You know? If they're a bad apple, they're gonna be a bad apple wherever they move.
You said... you stated you've got 12 units of those, or those owned by you, or are they tenant-owned or...
More than half are tenant-owned currently.
Okay.
I mean, and it costs a couple... $2,500, $3,000 to move. I mean, they're... that's... and plus, then if you say, okay, we gotta come in and conform, and you know, that's sort of like condemnation to me. I'd say, not only do I have to lose by some income stream or whatever it is, but now I gotta pay to do it. I mean, if you want to take my property, then buy it, the city, you know? Pay me for it. I mean, that's sort of the way, you know, it's looking at, you know, mine, you know? The rest of the ordinances, you know, most of that is, I intend, is all well and good.
Alan, you were telling me the other day that a lot of yours are rent-owned.
Some of them I have rent on, I've got a contract with people.
For the folks. You own those units, and you financed them for the folks that are living there now. You're selling them to them.
Right.
Okay.
So some of them that are in there, like that front row, there's... you said would have to go. The guys lived there for, I guess, 25, 30 years. I mean, a deaf man, I know he's on a fixed income of whatever disability is because he's deaf. He's the guy with a boat, you know, what are you saying? He's got a boat behind that one, and, I mean, I've asked him to move that, and well, I can't afford it, or I can't... you know, of course, there's... like anything, it's management, and, you know, could we do better? Maybe in some cases, yeah, but, you know, a landlord doesn't have... you know, people think, too, we just have our hand out. I mean, Ricky does a lot of double-wise, you know? It's... you don't... there's a lot to it. And as they do, I mean, I've got a lot of tenants that I've had to let... another lady that, I guess, you know, she couldn't... she can't pay her all her rent, you know? I mean, it just doesn't work out, you know? Do I throw her out? No. You know, and there's others, you know, with... the landlord doesn't have much teeth, except to throw somebody out. You can't make them pick up anything in the yard. You can't do... you can ask them, but you can't make them do anything. I mean, you want to ask anything more about mobile homes than I know it? Just go ahead, ask.
Any questions?
City needs to spend some money on chairs, because these things will kill you. My name's Chris Foster. I got a park. It's High Peak Mountain Road. It's beside Cheryl's Furniture.
Address, please.
It's 3186 High Peak Mountain Road.
And your address, please.
My address?
Yes, sir.
It's PO Box 514, Morganton, North Carolina.
All right. Thank you.
Me and my father bought this park in 93. He worked in a furniture company all his life. Needless to say, he didn't have a pension plan. Not all of us to get that after 30 years. I was self-employed, doing maintenance work, and had others, some properties as well. We bought it for an investment property for him and mom to have income besides their savings and social security. I'm not sure if this property falls in or gonna go back to the county or not. I don't know about your... where that is actually gonna take place or not. I've heard people talk here about their families. Well, I got 21 trailers. I've been able to replace 14. I constantly look for newer homes. They're not out there to be found. I can't afford to go spend $27,000 to replace the trailers. It would be stupid to do it. I mean, who would spend $500,000? I mean, it don't take an Einstein to say that's not gonna be a good investment. What you're gonna do is bankrupt me. You're gonna take away... what my pension plan was, that I worked 30 years for myself. You're gonna take away my dad, who's 84 years old, his extra income. Putting in 95-year trailers is not gonna change nothing. You can give somebody a $200,000 brand-new house. If they don't maintain it in years' time, it's gonna be a junkyard. Did any of yous go look at all the parks? Did any of yous talk to the landlords? Did any of yous talk to the tenants before you came up with this? If you'd came to me, I'd said, hey, go look at my park. I just changed out a mobile home three months ago and spent $10,000. Now you're telling me in five years, I should've saved my $10,000 because it's early 90 models? And now I get to spend $6,000 in five years to take it to the dump? Well, I won't pay for it. You might, but I won't. I got people that's been with me for over 10 years. Do you know why a lot of people rent mobile homes? They want a home. I got people that plant their roses, they plant their tomatoes, they got their own yards. They don't want to live in an apartment if you gave it to them. I've got little old ladies that's retired. I've got three people that's got college degrees, but they got their own yard. They got their own privacy. I understand a lot of homes looks bad. I understand a lot of mobile home parks look bad. I got no problem with making sure they're washed, the yard is taken care of. I got no problem if you want to start once a year coming by and inspecting parks. And if they're not kept up, charge a fee. That'd be great, because when I go to a tenant, I'm gonna say, you gotta clean that mess up, because if not, there's gonna be a fee coming. Now, my only option is, you gotta clean the mess up, or I gotta throw you out of your home. That's the only... I don't have any power else but to do that. But we constantly wash, we constantly paint, we constantly upgrade. Gave $250,000 for the park, and we spent, I guess we're at average, $8,000, $10,000, so that's another $140,000 since 93. It's... for me, it's my retirement. You know, me and my wife, we're thinking about buying a new home. House we live in now is built in '48, but it's a nice little brick home. Thought about getting a dream home. I'm glad we didn't go in debt for a home if this passes, because I won't afford it. There's no way. Again, if you wanted to make people make the parks look nicer, I got no problems. Telling them they put... gotta put in 95s in five years, that's not gonna solve the problem. We could all put them in. It's not gonna change anything as far as how they look. You know? You can give people a brand-new car, they don't take care of it. I don't have to tell what it looks like. Go out and look at my park and tell me what I need to do different. The last three inspectors that came out, including the last one, it was just back out this summer, all bragged about how nice the park looked. All of our... every one of our mobile homes has GDS trash cans. Our yards probably look as good as yours, if not better. I just spent $1,500 resewing them. We're getting ready to redo our... reseal our driveways. You know, I'm just asking you, don't ruin me. You pass this, that's what you're gonna do. I am 55 years old. I've had two back surgeries. I live in chronic pain. I don't have any other income as far as, except what little social security I might get. And I'm too old and too tired to start over. I'd be happy to do, again, do what needs to be done and make parks look nice. I hate junk. That's... I spend $250,000 a month furnishing trash cans because I don't want to see trash in our property, so I pay for it. You know? And then I get to turn around, this is the funny part, then I get to turn around and pay taxes again for trash pickup. So I'm paying it twice because I'm being charged the fee for the taxes. But I still go ahead and furnish the trash pickup. That keeps the park clean. I'm on people constantly. But, I mean, I got families there. Half of them's probably been there at least three years. I got another 20% that's been there over five, and got four or five that's been there over 10. I got three that's been there since bought the park. That was in 93. These are not tenants, they're homemakers. They don't want to live in apartments. If they could, they may, I don't know. You know, like I say, I got three guys that's got college degrees. They could afford to live in an apartment. They won't, I tell you, they don't want to live in an apartment. Cheryl's Furniture's right beside of me, and one time I had as many as five different people work at Cheryl's Furniture. It was great for them, they walked across the street, went to work. I have also, just finishing it right now, bought and redone probably four or five houses I'm finishing on right now out in Council Oaks that I've bought and flipped. I've had four of the neighbors come by and thank me that somebody went and bought the property and fixing it up. If they hadn't been from the money for a park, I couldn't have done this. This makes the third home that I've redone in the city of Morganton. There's a lot more than just the park, is what I'm trying to get to that.
Could I ask, your 21 units, what is the acreage that you cover and encompass?
I know you're gonna ask me that, and just to be honest with you, I'm not sure. I think it's somewhere around three acres.
Three acres.
All of our homes are probably... well, they're all easy 30 to 35 foot apart. I don't have a problem in zoning. What hurts me and my dad's part is we can only put in 60-foot wide trailers because of the width of the park. The length of the park, like I say, most of our homes are... some of them are probably as much as 40 foot apart. I don't have the width to put in bigger ones, which makes it even harder for me to find new small homes. And I would've bought more if I could've found them. I'm... all these other guys, we're all in competition to try to find these new homes, trust me. I mean, if somebody calls me up and one, and it's halfway decent... this last one, I didn't... I didn't pay a lot for it, but I turned around and put $5,000 in it. And now it looks like... I just rented it to a guy the other day. His... him and his mom come by. He's got a little girl. They said, that home looks new inside. I said, well, pretty much that home is new inside. You know, all of them's underpinned, we wash, we paint constantly. The decks, they can look nice, but what you're proposing... your proposing is just basically saying, well, you know, get what you can in five years, because after that, we don't care if you got any money coming in. We don't care if you got a pension coming in. That's what you're telling me.
So your... sir, your issue is with the amortization that we've got listed on?
That's the only thing I really got a problem with. I would replace, like I say, I'd replace more of them if I could get them. They're not to be had. And I'm in the business right now, or worse, to just maybe next... when I can afford it, buy new ones, because I have no other choice. I've got one... I mean, I could go in... you ask about the length of the life on these. As far as the frame and the studing and all that, it's no different from a regular house, except it's vinyl or metal on the outside of it. You could go in if you wanted to, make it look brand-new from the time it come off out of the factory. But at times, it comes to a point that it's just smarter to, of course, buy new ones. They're better insulated, better pipe systems. They're not better floors. My older homes had 3/4-inch plywood. These new homes have... These new homes have this pressed wood. Older homes was actually stronger built than the new ones are. Uh, but I mean, it does come to, to a point that it's, if you can find a newer home, of course, tenants like newer homes. I mean, that's another reason we, we bought newer homes. Just smart business to buy the newer homes.
I reckon, the question is, that we're trying to drive it is, on a replacement, would you be able to replace those with single wides?
If I could find them, I have no problem with it. I, you cannot get them, that's the problem.
So when it came time to do a replacement, what would you end up?
I'll have to buy a new one.
And that would be with a single wide or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm looking at time I get it done, inspected, the decks built, central air system. You're talking about thirty thousand dollars. I priced one over here in town, the guy said twenty-two thousand. I'm looking at another sixty-seven thousand, by the time you get it set up. You buy your heat pump system, you build your decks, you're gonna have close to thirty thousand dollars in it.
I understand.
It's gonna take you a lot of years to get that thirty thousand dollars back before you make a penny. But I mean, that's, like I said, yeah, I don't think there's anybody here that has an issue, except you're telling us we can do it for five years, well, we can't do it at all. That's the problem.
I understand.
If they're out there, we'd be buying them. The, the few that I get, the guy calls me up, I'd say, "Don't you sell that." And I take the money to him and get it for, for these, some of these other guys get it.
Let me ask you another question, as far as density, do you have any issues with the density, proposed density? That being four, four units, uh, per acre?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess if you... If it caused an issue to where it looked junky, I suppose so. Again, that goes back, if you can solve the problems of the park not looking nice, then I don't think that's a problem. What's the difference between having five or six mobile homes fifteen-foot apart and sticking fifty units in one building? I mean, I don't see, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, I understand.
I mean, I, it, it's all how it's taken care of and how it looks.
Okay.
As far as that goes. Uh, and again, I don't have a problem with you coming by once a year and telling me, say, you know, "This is our new agreement, you agreed to it. This has gotta be cleaned, and this has gotta be done, this has gotta be done, this has gotta be done." That'll just give me more power to tell my tenants, say, "Look." You know, I know years ago, I think you passed a law, or at least I told them you did, that they couldn't keep junky cars. Hell, I loved that. I didn't have to tell them, "I'm gonna convict you if you don't get rid of that junky car." I'm gonna say, "You're gonna have to move that junky car, the city's gonna give you a fine." Helped me cut my park clean. You know, I thought, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with some of, of anything to make a park look nice. But don't do something I can't do and financially, you're gonna destroy me, is what you're gonna do. That's all I got.
Well, taken, thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to, um, point out that several folks have had to leave. Um, and we might not be getting everyone's comments that we might need to hear. And there's several folks that are elderly that have had to leave that can't, you know, drive in the dark and things like that. And I just wanna encourage everyone to keep your comments succinct so that we can make sure that everyone is heard from and we get our notes written down and make sure we get all that taken care of.
Right, thank you. Next.
Good evening, my name is Martha Chapman, and I live at eight oh seven Jamestown Road here in Morganton. My question is, what's the ETJ project that is going on on Jamestown Road? And how is that going to affect me?
What is the ETJ project?
Yes, it was on your board, and it's some diagrams around it.
Uh, ba- basically, you understand what the extraterritorial jurisdiction area is?
No, I do not.
How, how far out, uh, Jamestown Road, you live south of the interstate?
I am, I guess that would be south. Towards the flea market, that's the way I live.
Past the interstate, or on this side of the interstate?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that is still gonna be in the city's, that's in the city limits, actually, so that would still be within the zoning category of the city. Um, areas south of the interstate will be dropped out, perhaps. The, the zoning along Jamestown Road is not changing significantly from what the uses are allowed there now. There's a lot of businesses along that corridor, there's some industry along that corridor. Uh, some multifamily, the Rain Tree and River Hills Development is under a neighborhood conservation district, so that means it would be single-family only in that neighborhood. But along the main corridor, there certainly could be businesses and, and offices. Multifamily units could be built along Jamestown Road under this zoning.
Well, so they would start to then take away, well, offer to buy property at that point, or?
No, no, it has nothing to do with purchase of property. I'm not, you probably should just give me a call maybe tomorrow. I'll be happy to kinda flesh out what it is you're asking.
Thank you.
Maybe I can't answer it good tonight. We'll figure it out, though. If you wanna grab one of my cards on the back table.
I sure will.
Certainly, I'll, I'll give you a call, or you can give me a call.
Great.
Just leave it with us.
That sounds wonderful. Have a good night, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Vernon McConnell, two oh seven Wilson Drive. I got a couple of questions for you, Mr. Anderson. On Barber Drive, part of Wilson Drive, you're gonna leave that as the, uh, load intensity district, correct?
And let me get over and look at it. There's a lot of areas around town.
Oh, yeah.
Barber Drive. Okay.
Barber Drive, Wilson Drive, Conley.
Conley?
It's all part of that neighborhood, Stormout, Barber, Wilson.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm looking on the wrong side, then. I got you. Back over where we were talking about earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My question to you, one of them is, why are you going to put it to mid-intensity district? Would that allow businesses all the way? All over it?
Oh, n- no, um...
You cannot put a business, as what you're saying, just said, and if it's low-intensity district, you cannot put a business there?
You can only do a home occupa- patient type, home occupation type business.
Okay, home occupation. Question. One oh three Conley Street. It's right next to, uh, Chick-fil-A.
One oh three Conley, okay.
Now, can they sell that? And to Chick-fil-A, and can Chick-fil-A use that as a entrance and exit?
No.
They cannot. Nobody could if you change it.
It would have to be rezoned to a high-intensity district because it would be an access to a retail use? That's a restaurant? And one oh three is a medium-intensity district?
That's what you wanna put it as?
That, that's currently zoned, well, it's proposed as. Um, Conley Street is a residential street?
Correct.
Okay? Commercial access cannot come, the restrictions in the ordinance says you cannot gain access through a residential neighborhood to a commercial retail use. Uh, the ordinance has restrictions against that. Now, the only way they could do that is they'd have to come back through this planning commission and back through a city council to rezon that property to a classification like one oh one, Conley Street is proposed at.
Right, but one oh one, one oh one is a rental house.
One oh one is proposed for high intensity.
Right, because?
You could, you, and, and certainly, high intensity opens up more doors. You can access any road for commercial use if you're high intensity.
Okay.
But medium intensity, you cannot do that. The restrictions prohibit that.
I'm sorry, the other question, you know, I was looking back there at your future road maps or planning.
The corridor?
Corridors, yeah, that's what we're looking for. And I was looking at on Berkmont Avenue. Unless, can I go get that and I'll show it to you?
I, I can pull it up here on the screen if we, I, 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 if I figure out where you are.
On the proposed one, you've got it going from where it crosses where Berkmont mute, Berkmont Avenue and Fleming Drive intersect. You've got it going all the way down to I forty, and it looks like you're gonna make a six-lane out of it.
Oh, you're talking about this hatched area on both sides?
The what?
This, this, look, on the screen there, let me, let me, you're talking about this hatched area on both sides?
Uh-huh.
Okay. What that is, 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 it's an overlay, it's another overlay district, it's called a corridor overlay. Those are over all of the major roadways into the city from the interstate. Fleming Drive, you can see, has that same hatching.
Right.
Okay? Um, anything that's blue...
It's just a zoning designation.
It's just a do, a zoning designation that carries more stringent design standards and appearance standards along those corridors.
Okay.
Um, in other words, um, a junkyard could not be within that area.
Right.
You couldn't put a, 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 an area, any kind of business that would be detracting to the main entrance into the city.
Okay.
Um, it wouldn't prohibit a McDonald's, a Chick-fil-A, those kind of things. There's some design standards for the building of what it looks like. It's gotta be attractive generally, they have to incorporate, you can't put prefab metal building in that area. That would be something that would be prohibited. You'd have to build a brick building. Uh, in that area.
To one, one side of it?
Um, yeah, you have to make it, there, there's some design standards for it. There's additional landscaping along the frontage of the road, along the main road to where, like, uh, Sterling Street is, there, there's beautification trees coming in. The, the goal would be over time, over a twenty or thirty-year period, to see as that develops to, to have it look more beautified coming in from the interstate. That's, that's what that does.
Okay, but to clarify, you cannot make, on this medium dense intensity district, you cannot have a business in there, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
If I want to.
You need to clarify that, Lee.
A business?
Obviously, you can have businesses in medium-intensity districts.
But not the one he's talking about?
No, I'm talking about a Chick-fil-A, a Time Out Burger, stuff like that.
No, that, that cannot go in that district.
Next.
Jason, excuse me, Jason Brown. I'm a property order, owner in, uh, city of Morganton. However, I currently reside in Catawba County. You heard from my father a little while ago. I would just like to voice my position against the mobile home park injections that y'all are doing. It does seem unfair to me, it does seem that you guys are picking on the mobile homes instead of the folks that need to do upgrades, whether it's mobile homes or homes in general. Just like Ms. Norman said earlier, there's plenty of homes here in the city that could use some work, some upkeep.
True.
I think that picking on one particular class of homes is unfair. I think some of the restrictions that you plan on imposing do sound a lot like government condemnation. You're gonna tell us that we can't use our property in a way in five years that we're currently using it now. I, I'm not attorney, I don't, you know, this, this is strictly what I, you know, the way I interpret it. Uh, I don't currently own any homes, mobile home parks, I may not, if you guys go through with this, obviously, it looks like, so... Um, but as somebody that stands to inherit or take over, or whatever you wanna call it, some of these homes, I, I do understand that the city has a desire to make them more presentable or more attractive, I don't know, you know, if you can make them more attractive. But again, I think there are things that can be done by the owners. Again, back to Ms. Norman, I mean, it's, you, I think the way you're going about it is incorrect. I think, uh, just like the fellow here, I guess he's gone, I can't remember his name. If you were to impose some sort of standards on these parks that are in the city and somehow get, you know, get together and come up with some sort of standards and hold them to the standards, I think that you would see an improvement in the direction that you guys wanna go. The homes, I, I did ask Dad the question, ninety-four, where's the ninety-four come from? Is that just 'cause they're vinyl and shingle?
Uh, HUD, uh, who approves mobile home construction style, changed the design standards in ninety-four. They're currently under a seventy-six in the city requirement. That's what the current zoning ordinance requires, that's when HUD established that set of standards. They changed the standards because of wind loads and some other things in nineteen ninety-four. And so we're moving up to meet the federal standards, uh, for mobile home construction.
And those standards are more stringent than the previous seventy-six standards?
Slightly.
Slightly? Even though it, the homes we know now are being built with cheaper materials, as was stated again by that other individual, the, the codes are more stringent?
According, according to the HUD standards, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, what, whatever their standard allows, that's what we allow.
Okay.
Um, and...
Is that because they're more structurally sound, or because of the appearance? Or what is your goal with that?
That was, that was HUD's intent, uh, when they did this redesign specification in ninety-four based on fallouts from a number of hurricanes that occurred in predominant areas where mobile homes or manufactured homes are located. So in ninety-four, they implemented with the manufacturers a requirement to, to take the structural standards higher.
So you're more concerned with the structural standards than the, than the, um, appearance standards?
From a safety standpoint, that's the, that certainly is a, is a concern.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, there, there was an article in the paper that kinda addressed our approach to it. I think our goal is to try to improve the neighborhoods that these are located in. Okay, that's the issue that we've, as a city, have been receiving. Is, a lot of these parks are older. Uh, most of them were built in the sixties or seventies. Some of the parks have been reinvested in by the park owners. Number of the parks have not been reinvested in, and I think the conditions of those parks has what's, is what's brought this issue to a head, uh, to the discussion. Mr. Foster's park, very, I mean, he's, it's a, it's one of the probably more less complained upon parks in the, in the jurisdiction. Some of the parks we receive complaints on weekly. The adjoining property owners do not have their opportunity to do the same type of development. So the values in the neighborhood, over the period of ti, over a period of four years, have changed. And, and the ability to, for those folks to gain the same return on their investment that the park owners have. That's, Ms., uh, she referred to that.
Well, those folks had the opportunity in the past, they just elected...
No, no, not necessarily, because this ordinance has been in place since nineteen eighty-five, actually. Uh, at the four-dwelling each per acre requirement. That, that was, that was a planning commission well before this planning commission, was before my time. Uh, set a standard at that time that mobile home parks should not contain more than four-dwelling each per acre because of density. And the number of people per acre, which is really what zoning, that's one of the basic pieces.
With any kind of zoning as we go forward a number of years, any kind of zoning that you guys impose could potentially create the unequality that you speak of. You know, I mean, it, if I'm doing something now and, and you rezone it differently, I'm not able to do it in the future.
Well, the nonconforming continues, the nonconformity continues. Everybody gets a chance to continue grandfather, to utilize their places. What we've seen in the parks is a steady decline in the condition of the parks, either through lack of maintenance...
But only by a few, is what you just said?
By a, a large number.
So you're classing everybody by a large number, but you're classing everybody together because of the nonperformance of a few?
Become in disrepair. And those, in those neighborhoods, the folks are complaining.
So why not?
The problem we're getting to is, is treating the park owners the same. Trying to figure out, okay, dealing with the individual who doesn't maintain their park and making them not operate any further, we can't do that. You can't take one park owner and treat them separate than all the park owners, just like...
If you create a set of standards, though...
I can't treat one business different than another business, they're all under the same rules.
But if you create a set of standards that you say that, that the park has to operate by, and then you have one fellow that's out of that compliance, that would give you the authority to go in and say, "Fix it or else."
Well, that's...
It was, okay? The, the North Carolina General Assembly kinda changed the rules on us two years ago. Um, we, we were doing a rental registration program where we would go in to the rental units, apartments, uh, mobile home parks, all of those things, through the building code program to, to keep the units up to a minimum standard, a minimum housing standard. Uh, that had been in place for probably ten years, close to it. The North Carolina General Assembly, uh, two years ago prohibited that program. They basically wiped out that program with, with their, uh, legislation. So the city could no longer go in and, and inspect those units on a routine basis to require that the units be kept up to a minimum standard. I mean, some of that was helping, 'cause you could go in, deal with the nuisance issues, deal with the, the... 'cause you could go in, deal with the nuisance issues, deal with the, the building and overcrowded issues of things that, where you had unsafe living conditions, uh, unsafe environment with electrical, uh, issues and, and porches falling in and things of that nature. Since that program stopped, what we've seen is a steady decline because the, the park owners who do care about their parks and reinvest in their units and put new units in and keep the parks up to a standard, we generally don't get a lot of complaints from the neighborhood. I mean, they, they haven't seen the situation change significantly. But where we do have situations where we've seen increased calls from public safety, and some of them have substantial number of calls on a weekly basis. Um, one of the ladies who called me, I've had tenants call us in the park, you know, when they say, this is really improved. We're only seeing three to five public safety calls a week now, that gives me concern. I mean, it gives everybody concern. In the city, it gives public safety concern. It gives the building inspections folks concern that the conditions in the park, uh, and the conditions that it's creating in the neighborhoods is what we used to call like a blockbuster use, where you come in and you plop down one use and it affects and impacts the entire neighborhood. Now, this happened back in the seventies. In these situations, th, these parks were built, this is not something that happened last week or last year or two years ago. This happened in, in the seventies. So the situation has been, those folks have been in good condition up until recently, but the, but the units aren't getting changed out. I mean, there's still sixty age units and nineteen seventies units. And these situations where we're having a lot of problems and they're not reinvesting. And so the neighborhoods are in decline. The, the, what were neighborhoods that were owner occupied housing around these parks have become rental housing now. And so those houses are now starting to go into decline because they're not reinvesting, because the, they're, they're not seeing the value of being able to reinvest in property or spend a lot of money, just like the park owners don't wanna spend a lot of money 'cause it's not a good business decision. They're not seeing it's a good decision because the value in the neighborhood and the ability to generate rent income from those neighbors is not high. So it's, it's a growing problem. What happens is that everything kinda expands around that one use. Now, they're getting a good return. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful business model. It's very low investment and it's a good return on investment. Uh, I've talked to a lot of the owners. It's a very good rental income. But the folks in the neighborhood, if, unless we change the rules to allow everyone in the neighborhood with acreage and vacant lots, or even a house with a rental lot on it that they wanna take down and put multiple units to be able to generate that kinda income off the same type of property, at a twelve unit per acre or a ten unit per acre, a seven unit per acre, unless we change the rules to allow everybody to operate under the same guidelines, you can see why the neighborhood doesn't like us. They, they don't like the situation because they're seeing their, their values decline while the, the, the park owners, their incomes stay high. I mean, their, their return is still strong. Whether or not they're investing in their units or they're not investing in their units, they still get the same, a lot of the same return. In fact, they probably get a better return by not, not putting new investment in their park because they don't have to, you know, spend the money.
Sure.
But the, but the folks in the neighborhoods are the ones that we have to answer to as well as the park owners.
Understood. In the interest of time, I'll just close. Um, I would like to reiterate again, I'm opposed to this. I think the way that you're going about it is incorrect. I think that there's a way to get where you guys wanna go without going in the direction you've gone. Specifically, I'm against the, the density and, um, the, the year requirement of ninety, of nineteen ninety-four. Um, I've seen these homes, I've seen Dad take these homes down to the inside, you know, all the way down, build them back up. You walk inside, you know, just, I mean, they're almost brand new homes. Those things were built to HUD codes, you know. Back in the day, those codes were done, you know, for stick-built homes as well. I mean, that, you know, they hold up. A tornado can knock down a home. It can knock down a, a mobile home as well. So I do think that, that the major issue that you guys face is the maintenance of some of, you know, of these homes and some of these folks that aren't maintaining them. I'd like to see y'all go in a different direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, anyone else in the audience that would like to address an issue that?
I am Mrs. Albert Chris, seven sixteen East Union Street. Just a few walks from City Hall. I'm here to complain, to learn a little bit about land value and to learn what might happen to your property and if it is sold without you knowing it or either you will be notified that it is in line with, uh, proposals that the, that the city have already proposed without your knowledge. So because I haven't met, I haven't been to any of your meetings because I didn't know about them. I, I'm not offering an excuse. I just didn't get the notice. Did not get a notice. But when I saw this notice, it brought me to City Hall, but I've been to City Hall several times. But this one really brought me to, tonight, because I don't know anything about zoning except where I live was zoned for business about nineteen and ninety-four, five. So I said, well, that's all right. Zoning is all right for me. I mean, business is all right for me because we owned across the street here, Albert's Barber Shop and Pool Room and Bowling Alley and, and Ebony Grill. So we were used to business. And so when we sold that, we went to Avery Avenue, which is still business. And when all the children graduated, they left home. So I didn't have much to do about business because I was a thirty-seven year teacher and I was retiring soon. To find out that I was comfortable living in Morganton. And as my husband had built the home before I married him because he had, his wife had passed. And in nineteen fifty, we married. And I was teaching here in Burke County. I'm from Caldwell County. And I've been here ever since. My children left and they all wanted me to follow them to Chapel Hill, to Lake Norman, to Nashville, but I said, no, this is home. And it has been home until two years ago. You would not believe that this has occurred on East Union Street, three blocks from City Hall, and no one paying attention but me. The neighbors were afraid and that's why not a lot was done about it. They had been shut up in the home afraid on account of drugs across the street where I live.
Okay, I don't mean to interrupt. I don't mean to interrupt, but, uh, could you be specific? If you've got concerns dealing with our zoning regulation?
Were if, if, since I saw, um, that it would still remain business along with home neighborhoods, am I right in that? Did I hear that? All right, then I'm satisfied with that. Because my children will be doing what they need to do.
Okay.
So if it becomes business, then I'm gonna like that.
The, the East Union Street corridor and the East Meeting Street corridor are both, uh, proposed for high intensity zoning. And businesses, multifamily, all kind, office uses could all be developed along that corridor. Uh, as long as the lots have direct frontage on East Union Street.
I promised them that I would try to learn a little bit about this tonight because they're waiting to hear because
Thank you.
Their jobs keep them very busy.
I understand. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
But I'm still watching and hoping that the change will come across the street and we'll have a better neighborhood like we used to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Black, two fourteen Davis Drive, Morganton. Just a couple of, uh, questions. Uh, just like you to go over the, the changes in signage. Also currently present the Burke County Board of Realtors. I know there's some sign changes, size changes and so forth. And if we can get some explanation on that, first of all.
Aaron, you might wanna address that one.
Did you have specific questions about particular types of sign? Just all, all but-
The whole sign order?
Um, were you asking specifically about re, real estate signs?
Real estate sign, yard signs, commercial signs, all of it's changing.
Yeah. If you wanna ask about a specific sign type, we can, uh, talk about the sizes. I mean, if you wanna talk specifically about real estate signs, um, those are in here. Um-
Brian, what might be best if you, if you come to my office tomorrow and I can go through all the sign changes so that we don't, uh, we got other folks that wanna speak. And if you've got specific requests for changes in, in the ordinance that's not, that's being proposed, then, you know, we can get that into, into the minutes or get it into the, in, before the city council, before they take any fine action on it. But, um, the, the entire sign ordinance is, has made proposal for changes. It's online. You can certainly read through it. Uh, I can compare it with you one-on-one and a lot easier, but-
Same folks need to understand how significant the changes are and, and what all is being proposed to change from, from, from flags to banners to signs to size of signs. There's such a significant change that it, there needs to be more discussion about, uh, about that. We spend a lot of time on, on mobile homes and there is a, a significant change in that. And, uh, public and businesses need to know what they'll be able to do, be able to put back and so forth when, uh, you know, as part of this new ordinance.
Okay.
So.
Duly noted.
Agreed. Okay, so I'll be more than happy to come up. Second thing, I just wanna make sure you understand, and I'm not a, you know, as a realtor, uh, mobile home parks can be a cash cow and they also can be a disaster. Just, uh, just of a point of concern. For instance, if Mr. Norman, I don't know his financial situation, but he owns, he, he owes money on this park. Okay, five years comes up, he's got a significant debt on that park. He, the bank has the park, has the mobile homes as security. And you're telling them that they have to remove those. And that's a part of the collateral for the loan. He could know he can't do that. He can't afford to do that. It is collateralized. So what happens? He walks away and we, you and the city will have to be prepared to deal with forty units, fifty units of blight that, you know, that will have to be demolished, taken care of, redone. So as you look toward that zoning, just be careful that we don't create exactly the opposite of what we think we want to do in these mobile home parks. Cause, uh, there are several of them. There's, as you well know, there's one on Walker Road, uh, I mean, Fletcher Street. There's another one over off where you used to go to Freedom High School that's down on the right-hand side that are just, you know, they're blighted and they're, and we don't wanna create any more of that situation than, um, you know, than we already have. So just be careful that, that ninety-four issue doesn't, um, come back to bite us in that they won't be able to make those changes. Uh, they are financed. It is collateralized. What you do, what you tell BBNT that, uh, has two hundred thousand dollar mortgage on that park. So be careful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
My name is Mike Irvin. I live at a hundred and seven Newland Street, City of Morganton. I guess there'll be no Thursday night football for this crowd tonight, so. We'll proceed on. I think most everything that I wanted to say, I think everybody's pretty much lit you up pretty good on it. And I know the folks on this committee are here to represent all the citizens of Morganton. Don't make any difference, man, woman, child, black, white, Hispanic, 'cause we're truly an international community. I have a couple of points I'd like to bring out. Home is where the heart is. Not all homes are equal in value or appearance. They're homes to the people who live in them. Please consider that. I'm against the amateurization of mobile homes. At one time, I almost considered it with talking with Lee Anderson. I am now against it. I think the property owners have a lot of work to do. But the folks who live in these homes that rent lots from us, how you gonna tell them to leave? How you gonna tell that disabled child that the bus isn't gonna come pick him up again? How are we going to approach eviction? 'Cause it will be an eviction process. Property owners will have to go to the courthouse, take out a hundred and twenty-five dollar eviction process, have to go to the sheriff's department. Probably about that time Andy Cogdell up at the Western Piedmont Council of Governments or up here at the law office that helps unfortunate folks, he's probably gonna get a phone call and wanna know what's going on. Then we got a lawsuit started. And on top of that, I believe this is correctly. I'm not gonna quote you like this other lady did. There's a fine that's possible to the property owner if we don't get it removed in a certain period of time. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be a violation of the ordinance, the way it's drafted.
Levied on a property owner because he can't get it removed in this certain period of time. Boy, that's really unfair to us to fine us for a judicial process that's gonna end up in the courts. I find that extremely emotional and I find it unfair to the property owners without due process. One of my favorite quotes, I won't say who it is, but he'll know who it is. Ugly is not a violation. And none of us need to be around here trying to criticize one person because they think their residence or their home or their mobile home is ugly. If somebody wants to paint their house red and somebody wants to complain about it, that's fine. But it's not a violation. And we don't need to be in that business of telling folks how their homes got to look. Now, if it's trash, you got a lot of cars sitting out there all jacked up and there's five dogs tied up. We already have legislation here. It's already here. All we have to do is enact it. Last two points I want to say are, not every home in Morganton has a paved driveway. A lot of homes, brick, would have gravel driveways. And on this ordinance here, I'm seeing, you're gonna want mobile home parks to pave theirs. What are you gonna do for a homeowner?
Just, just the main road, Mike, not the driveways. Driveways can be gravel. There's nothing that says the driveways have to be paved. It was just the, the main road to keep the dust down.
This is a medium twenty-foot paved drive that has direct access to the public street.
Yeah, the main, the main drive, the main road into the mobile home park. Most of them are. Most of them are already paved. Most of them are.
You know, there are, there are homes in this town, two and three-story homes, three thousand square feet, that still have gravel driveways. What are you gonna do to those folks? Are you gonna bring some legislation against them to force them to have, to have, to have theirs paved? Let's think about that one. I think it's a little bit sticking your nose into something too much. Last thing, a dumpster shall be provided and screened. Well, a dumpster's, I understand the point, but if you so put a dumpster in one of these mobile home parks, you're probably going to get maybe somebody up the street that's got a nice, fine home and they've got an old couch that they want to move, they might just slip down there in the middle of the night, throw it in that dumpster. So, you know, that, that's putting a burden on us. We already have statutes. We already have a fee on our utility bill where the city comes around and picks this stuff, this stuff up for us. Our parks don't need a dumpster in it. We have, we pay a tax every year on our property for it to be picked up, plus the folks that have electricity on have a utility fee in their bill to pick up the trash. So if you put a dumpster out there, who gets the bill for that? Ah, guess I know who, boys. It'll be us. Put it on us to pay for it. We pay Burke County tax for every unit we have so that our tenants can produce trash. Guess it's about seventy dollars, isn't it? Sixty-four dollars? If you got twenty units, you're going to drop two or three thousand dollars just so we can pay for our tenants, can put garbage away. So, you know, putting a dumpster here, that, that just doesn't make any sense to me. That's all I got to say to you because I'd just be repeating everything. Y'all tired. Y'all going to vote on this stuff a little bit, but passing it on to city council because I'm sure we're going to light them up when we get the opportunity to. Appreciate your time because I know you're not getting paid anything. I hope they fed you a little lunch and everything.
Thank you, Mike.
My name is Sonny Towery. I live at 2250 Fittipolle Drive. My mobile home park is 200 South Chestnut Street. Co-op with my son Jeff, and I know you heard, oh, you want to hear about mobile homes, so mine's going to be short and sweet. I think everybody thinks, I know you've got a committee to come in and tell all these local people, we could have got together and talked about this thing and saved the hundred, two thousand dollars that the city spent. The problem, I think, a lot of people thinks if you got a mobile home park, that you've got plenty of money. I want to point out a couple of things to you. We just put in a late-model mobile home, what, four or five months ago? Got four permits in the city of Morganton to put the home in. The only move out cost eight hundred dollars, four hundred to haul it over and four hundred to bury. If all these ordinance and things you got goes through, how in the world is this gentleman back here going to bury fifty-two mobile homes when I'm concerned about burying nine at eight hundred dollars a piece? I think if this thing goes through, the city's going to wind up trying to figure out how to get rid of some property. I mean, I, I, I'm just against the thing a hundred percent. The one, I worked in the state of North Carolina for over thirty years operating the warehouse at Broughton Hospital. I retired and started a rental business. I've done more work in the rental business, but I won't take, wouldn't tell all these state people that. I've done more work trying to have a home and a place for people to live. It's not just a mobile home. We got houses all over City of Morganton. And I really think the City of Morganton's come out a whole lot better than Jeff and I has in, in this rental business because that mobile home park is small compared to what some of the gentlemen have got. But every person down there work, every one of them. We got mentally handicapped. We don't discriminate against anybody if they got a good record. I think the problem with some of these mobile homes, screen who you're putting in there. Get good people in. I've got people who've been with us twelve and fourteen years. We started seventeen years ago and that says something about our mobile home park. And I think the, the committee, y'all too, go down and look at our, and I'm not kicking anybody else's mobile home park, go down Chestnut Street whenever you drive by tomorrow and look. It's landscaped. There's nowhere in the world, I, I took the handicap lady, took her over to HUD. That's a year behind. Okay, so something that, that had been by the month. They called me last week, won't know if I'd come take her. She don't have a vehicle. I'm not in the taxi business, but I dropped what I was going, took her over there. Five hundred a month. Five hundred a month to live in a, the housing authority. Plus she has to pay her power bill and a water bill. They didn't tell her that. Took her over to the Willows, which is a low income. She qualified for it. One-bedroom house over there is five hundred dollars a month. She lives in our mobile home over there. Two months would give her free this year because she didn't have any money. She opened up a banking account, didn't know a thing in the world about writing checks, wrote nine-bed checks. Come time to pay the rent, she hadn't no money. What am I going to do with her? Couldn't put her on the street. She lived there two months free. She got five hundred and thirty, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars a month. My, that park right there is not my livelihood. My problem is walking on those, knocking on those doors and telling those people, we're closing the park down. I'd break my heart to do that. We got, like Jeff told you, we got a lady in there that's got four kids, her husband left her. We got white Americans. We got Guatemalans. We got blacks. Whoever qualifies can live in that park right there. And I would invite all of you to go, most of you, I know on the Mr. Food Line right there, I know Mr. Gordon and John Smith, most of you I've known for a long time. That lady right there, she's at Broad Oaks. Jeff used to live where he garded. When he's in college, more than that whole thing over there, work all day for forty bucks. So he, like me, he's, he's been working all of his life too. So I wish really you'd take a good, good look at this before you make any decision. I know you're going to hand it on over to the city council. Think about these people that's got nowhere to go.
Okay, understood. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll bring one point up to you.
Please.
Is there anybody left in this audience here that wants to speak for this?
I'll say one thing. I don't think most of you...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
...about the mobile homes been stepping stone. Sir, you need to identify yourself.
My name's Doug Morton, 3037 Cosby Road, Morganton. Spent a stepping stone for a lot of people that they've had to live in a trailer park. Find a place to live, meet a lot of good people. And I think the majority of people in this room has lived in a trailer or living in a trailer park once in their lifetime. So not pouring a single nobody out. You know, it's just, like she, like she says, a stepping, stepping block till you can get, get you a home. I know people that's moved in this town and they, they come to this town for a reason, for work. They, they look back, and I don't know if it's a grudge thing, but they, they look back on people living in trailer parks. They forget, once they get their home and moved in a better home, they look back and they don't realize they lived in that trailer park one time. That's all. Thank you.
Sure. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address an issue other than trailer parks? That's correct.
My name is Denise Gregg and I live at 106 C Raw Street. I'm a tenant of Mr. Norman's mobile home park. I have actually been a tenant there for forty years, since I was a child. And I choose to stay there because it's a very safe place to live and it's convenient and it is, in my opinion, one of the most well-maintained parks in Morganton or Burke County. And I feel that, I don't feel that mobile home parks are trashy or the tenants that live in them. And I also have a comment on the mobile home parks lowering property values. I don't feel that they do because me and my husband actually owned a single-family home beside this mobile home park and there was only a chain-link fence that separated the home from the park. And when we sold the home, we actually made a profit off of it because the park, Tim Norman, is he will, he keeps his park well-maintained and he makes sure that it's crime-free and there's not a day goes by that he's not actually in there somewhere in the park watching out for the tenants and cleaning up. And he makes sure that all his trailers, he has them remodeled all the time, constantly maintains them. And I just feel that it's a very good place to live and I feel that a lot of people would be very, very sad if they had to leave this place and that it had to be closed down because a lot of them are on fixed incomes and they really couldn't afford it. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Please come to the podium if you have something to say.
Is there anyone else going to speak tonight on mobile home park? I, I know what she's going to say. I'd like the record to note that there was not anyone who spoke in favor of this tonight. And the folks that are going out here talking about the type of people and how they look did not come. They didn't voice their opinion. And please remember all the folks that came out here tonight and told you all the stories. Told you all the adventures and the lady that spoke about her home for forty years. You ought to think about that. It means something. And the folks that should be for this, none of them are here. None of them are here. They're just talkers. They'll call you up on the phone and they'll say something, but they won't tell you their name. They just want to complain. These folks live twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in these places.
Thank you.
I'm just going to make it short and brief. Tim and I would like to invite each and every one of you to come to our park. And look, I can't offer the homes that own, for the tenants to own their own homes, to offer you to look and inspect their homes, but any of the trailers that we own, we're extending a personal invitation to each and every one of you to come out and inspect those homes and see that we provide not only affordable housing, but quality housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norman. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion of our meeting and ask the commission for inputs, thoughts, ideas, discussions. Judy, you have any?
I'm curious. Lee, you had sent out some information about the amortization issue and some ways that maybe some things could be altered. And I didn't get a chance to read it. Could you explain what you had sent out?
Yeah, as we've been gathering folks and talking with tenants and landlords, what we're finding is every situation is different. Every park is, is unique. The impacts of the amortization proposal is unique also. Some have adjacent acreage or they have more acreage and so the dwelling units per acre is not as big a problem. Some of the folks, they, the, the narrowness of the property, the setbacks are a major problem, just to be able to get the setbacks or the screening incorporated in. Most of them have paved drives or paved roadways that go in. The setbacks, the separation between the units varies depending on what park you're in. I think the, the amortization that's drafted said a twenty-five-foot spacing between units. Some can, some, some would have it, have a very difficult time getting a twenty-five-foot fire separation between the units.
Is twenty-five feet the fire permit?
Twenty-five feet is recommended by the, by the fire officials and by the building code officials. What they, in fact, the draft that they, they talked about, a lot of times, even if you get twenty-five feet between the units, by the time you get the decks or the access points to them, or if there's accessories, structures that are often built in some of the parks that also between the units, that fires can jump from one to the other. And so as, as the inspection status or as the quality of the unit as far as safety, electrical wiring and other, those hazards, as we don't go, go into those units routinely, the chances of fire are much, much increased. So that's one of the situations in trying to, to look not only at the situation of, of the park itself, but safety of the tenants that are within the parks. Some that have those spacing already spaced out, they're not going to have a lot of issue with that, but they may not meet the side yard setbacks. So each individual park, and I was trying to scroll through some of them as we was going through, and, and there's about twenty-five that qualify as a, you know, a park, two or more units on an individual piece of property. Probably only fifteen of those, ten or fifteen of those have, say, more than five units, five to ten units. And some of the larger units, larger parks have, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, up to seventy-five, eighty, ninety units. The Amherst Park, Green Hill, I think it's Green Hill, I think there's eighty-eight units in that park. That's one of the later parks. That was actually expanded in the nineties and that park does meet the four dwelling units break. It's on a large tract of land. It's, it has the paved roads. It has the access points. It has all the water and sewer hookups, has the spacing requirements. Doesn't have the ninety-four or newer units. That would be one of the issues. I spoke to them. It doesn't have necessarily the screening standards along the lines, but for the most part, that park would fall within compliance other than the age of the units. The owner occupied units versus the, the renter occupied units, that's another issue that has been discussed a lot among the, the landlords. How does that impact the individual owners of the units? One of the proposals that one of the park owners made was to extend the period of time to allow the older units to, to remain for a longer period of time. The compromise, at least as talking to the multiple tenants or multiple owners, is I think a lot of it drive, is, is based on density. I mean, that's, seems to be more of the issues is a lot of units in a small area. That's not necessarily the only issue. A lot of them are just the conditions of the park. The airpark situation that we had was a fairly significant problem for the city in that the condition of the units had gone down. The public safety calls had increased. There was a flooding event. The property owner didn't reinvest in the units and so the unit started going downhill. And, and they, it, it just went into complete decline until there was maybe one or two tenants in the park. The Fletcher Street park, very similar situation. We've got a park that has somewhat been abandoned by the owner. It was a financial issue that, that caused that. There was a very large mortgage loaned on the park due, for the income stream. It was based on the income stream and for whatever reason, that income stream was somewhat ignored, I guess, by the owners. They kind of walked away from it. They either took the mortgage and took the money and did something else with it and, but walked away from the park. And so you ended up with twenty-two out of the twenty-seven units that are condemned and they're still sitting there and they've been there for years. And of course, that requires the city that came up tonight to spend substantial amount of taxpayers' dollars to go in and remove the units with little or no chance to recoup the funds from the, for the, but the neighbors, and some of those were quoted, and some folks are, you know, this is a sensitive issue. You know, it's, it's difficult to talk about. It, it carries, it carries a lot of different social issues with it and there's value issues and there's business issues. I mean, there's a lot of things when this came up. I mean, there's a lot of things when this came up. And this is not something that we've talked a whole lot about. I mean, it kinda came up at the joint workshop of the city council and the planning commission. It's not something we've been talking about for twelve months. This is something that's fairly new discussion. I think we've scratched through a lot of the information in the last thirty days, but is it the perfect ordinance? Absolutely not. It's not a perfect ordinance by any stretch, the amortization part. It's got weaknesses. I think it needs to be explored. Obviously, the neighborhoods have issues. The park owners have issues. The residents in the parks have issues that they need to have addressed. You know, it would be my recommendation that you set it aside. You know, this is one of the things that you set aside and enable the ordinance that we didn't hear a whole lot about other than this, to let it move forward to the city council and move through that process. And if this is something that's really important to folks, then we need to hear from as many folks as we can and allow it to get worked out right. It needs to work for everybody. It shouldn't just work for one side. It can't just work for the park owners, because the neighbors have a voice. They need to be, the issues that they're seeing are real. They're calling us daily. They call us a lot. It's not, they may not be in this room, but they're out there. I wouldn't state that, this is not a Lee Anderson issue. This is an issue that we're hearing and we're communicating out to folks. Let them know that this is a neighborhood issue that needs to be dealt with. And whether it's the park owner that needs to be dealt with, individuals that do not maintain their parks, or if it's the way they, just the number of units that's in the park. I don't know. I don't know what the perfect answer is, but there's, it can't stay the same way it is, or these folks are not gonna be happy. The other folks, we'll hear from the other side. I guarantee you that we'll hear other comments from what they've heard tonight. This is not a, folks, there's not people out there that's not saying anything about this. They would not be calling us about the complaints.
Well, it seemed like the main issue that everyone that spoke in general was okay with the basic standards. It was the amortization issue that really was causing problems. And quite frankly, we hadn't really talked about that until the joint work session last month. So we haven't fleshed that out either.
That's right. I mean, a lot of these issues that are in the ordinance, not the amortization ordinance, I mean, we've spent twelve months working through a lot of different pieces of this ordinance. This piece is not ready to move forward. In the staff's opinion, it's not ready to move forward. And whether it moves forward in this form or some other form in the future, I mean, that's really for the group to decide if you wanna have additional workshops on it and have other input. But I would recommend you set it aside.
Okay, got that comment. The other point gleaned was our first commenter talking about streamers. Does the commission have a feeling one way or the other about that under our signed ordinance where we prohibited the use of streamers?
Did we not come up with an alternative of the flag?
I thought we did have an alternative.
Standing flag?
The alternative was to allow feather flags, so allowing one temporary sign per lot of record. So that's something that would be allowed instead of the streamers.
So no feeling one way or the other about that. Ms. Burris, can I ask you if you gleaned any other comments that you said that people didn't have an opportunity to make for us?
Most of the ones that I've talked to people about were about specific properties and questions about what they could do with their specific property in the future. And they said they either have been in touch with staff about it or will get in touch with staff about those specific questions. There was nothing in general, it was all about specific properties.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you have anyone that would like to make a motion? What I would recommend is that we forward the ordinance is drafted and we delete Section 6.4.4 for the present.
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion to second. I would also like to amend that, that we also recommend to the city council, that the city council establish an affordable housing task force. Because what we've done is, the metaphor is, we've got a pot of soup here, and we've stirred the soup, and things have surfaced tonight. And we've certainly identified a number of social issues that this type of ordinance proposal can create. And I think it goes beyond the purview of our commission, but I think at the city council level, there's a number of people that certainly felt strongly about it and voiced their opinions on mobile home parks or manufactured home parks. And I think now would be a great time to establish some kind of a task force that could address that issue as far as affordable housing, which is probably the bottom underlying issue that we've allowed to be created here in the City of Morganton. So I would like to make that as an amendment to the motion.
I'll make that motion with the amendment.
Okay, good. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. I'd like to have a call in favor. Second was over here, Don Smith.
Yes.
Just a second. Let me, is it something pertinent to what we're trying to do here?
Yes, I just wanna say, can there be members outside of this on that task force?
Be it to the council.
I'll say that again. Our recommendation is to the city council to appoint members within the community to form an affordable housing task force. It doesn't involve or necessarily involve members of this commission.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Call for the vote now. All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. This goes to the city council then, November?
This will go to the November third city council meeting, where a public hearing will be held at 6:00 PM in this council chamber. Public notices will go out once again, and advertisement in the paper will be had, will be placed in the news herald.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify and to be certain, I'm not certain that a public hearing will be held on November third.
No.
So it's not gonna be a staff call, public hearing? Is that what you're saying, Lloyd?
I'm not certain. I just wanna make clear about it. It goes before the council on November third. Whether they hold a public hearing then is another story. I think that's the best way to put it.
So we wanna advertise a public hearing for the November third meeting?
I'm not certain. That's all I can tell you right now. But it'll be on the agenda one way or another, because, you know, they may very well want to call a public hearing at that meeting, just to clarify.
Is there any other business to be brought before the commission by members of the commission? If not, I also move we adjourn.
Probably.